The November Board of Education meeting will come to order. I would ask that Mr. Rogers give the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this evening that you've given us to join together. Lord, just a few moments ago, as we heard all the laughter and the happiness and the smiles, and Lord, we thank you for that we can have that opportunity, that we can have that freedom of choice. Lord, we pray that you guide this board as we make the decisions that affect the lives of these children, the lives of this staff, the lives of our parents, and our communities. Lord, we pray that we do the best things that's in the best interest, and it be in thy will. Guide us and direct us in all that we do, Lord. We give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and be seated. Both Mr. Francis's had work obligations and could not be here tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting. And Mr. Henson will be doing the finance for Mr. Jim Francis. Have a couple of announcements. December the 8th is the Christmas parade. Therefore, instead of having the Board of Education meeting that night, we will have it on December the 9th at 7:00 here. That is a Tuesday. Are there any other announcements to come before the board? At this time, I'd ask Mr. Morris to please come down here. Mr. Morris, I want to take this opportunity, on behalf of the board and Mr. Chuck Francis, to thank you for your service on the Haywood County Board of Education. You have been a committed member who took the time to educate himself on the issues and functions of the board. I appreciate your willingness to serve the citizens of Haywood on the Board of Education. Thank you, Bob, for three years of your service to the board.
I won't take much time, but I would like to say, thank you very much for this. It's been three enjoyable years. I've met some of the greatest people that you'll ever meet serving on this board. I've made some very, very good friends serving on this board. And I love Haywood County. It's been nine years, six on the community college board, three here. So the night, me and my wife was sitting there, and she goes, "What are we going to do now?" I said, "Well, dear, I'm going to finally give you the attention you deserve." So, again, Haywood County schools, principals, teachers, students, I believe in you. It's not a finer school system than I've ever seen. Some of the best teachers I've ever met, principals, love yous all. Board members, thank yous all very much. It has been a very gracious honor to serve with you. Central staff, Tracy, Dr. Ann, all yous, again, love yous all. I wish yous all the very best. You got a good board member coming on, Mr. Rogers, so, I mean, life's going to continue on, and, again, appreciate yous all very much. Bye-bye.
At this time, we do have a couple of agenda adjustments. We have one additional policy to be presented for the first reading. This will be added to Agenda Item Number 15, Policy 3410, Testing and Assessment Program. We also have an additional recognition. This will be added after Agenda Item 6. Jill Barker will recognize Bethel Elementary and Riverbend Elementary as Title I reward schools, and Riverbend as a finalist for the North Carolina Distinguished School. We're very proud of those schools. And at this time, I'd recognize Mark Shepherd for the presentation to the Middle School Fall Sports Program.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to present to you tonight the Waynesville Middle School Football Team, who went undefeated in their regular season, and Canton Middle School Soccer Team. And we're going to ask Bonnie Coleman to come around first and recognize the Waynesville Middle Football Team.
Chairman Board, Dr. Garrett, I'd like to take a couple of moments to recognize our football team and just give you a couple of the many highlights of this year. First of all, they had two shutouts this season. They were outscoring opponents 35 to 13, had over 300 yards rushing in their offense on average, and of course, they were undefeated this season for the second year in a row. And even more importantly, on a student-athlete perspective, which we value very much so, we had no discipline issues this year, no grades that were falling behind. They were stellar. So on behalf of Waynesville Middle School, Mr. Putnam and our Waynesville Middle School Athletics Program, we are very, very proud of them and are just exceptionally excited to see what comes from great things they do at the high school. We will save you all the time of going through all the certificates. We will hand those out at the back, but we just, again, wanted to recognize these gentlemen and thank the board for inviting us.
Thank you.
My shoulder. My shoulder. It's going to be the 7th.
They move ball in there, coach, on the back porch. They move.
All right, guys. On three. One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Who is the next one? Okay.
Very good. And now, we're going to ask Ricky Warren and Kevin Drury to come around and recognize Canton Middle School's Soccer Team.
We're a little thin tonight. That's all right. I would like to say thank you, guys, the board, and the county, all for recognizing these young men. This is my 11th year at Canton Middle, and we've worked hard to get this program where it is, and I think this is the first time they've ever won a soccer, not just, last two years ago, we were division champs, and this year, we were 14-0 conference champ, Blue Ridge Conference champs. This couldn't happen. Kevin Drury's helped me for two years now. He's coached a lot of these guys when they were five and six years old, so he deserves the credit. I just, he kind of kept me grounded, I guess, in a way. But this is my 11th year, and when I first came here, we all know this is a football county. They don't really like the round ball and different parts and places around here, and we've worked hard to change that. But it's, you know, football's great. I like watching football, but soccer's my passion. That's what I played. And these young men, I can't say enough, shoot, the Waynesville coach was saying about them on the field, these guys, and every team I've coached, has been, it's more important to me what they do off the field. I mean, the field's great. These guys accomplish great things on the field, but in the classroom is even more important to me, and that's what I'm more proud of, of these guys. But they worked their tails off. They worked hard. We had a saying, "Nobody works harder than us," and they probably heard me say that every single day. And that's why these guys are where they are now. We're 14-0, Blue Ridge Conference champs, and I'm proud of these guys. I'm proud of this program that we have at Canton Middle, and it's not because of me, it's because of them and good assistant coaches like Coach Drury here that where we are. But I appreciate you guys recognizing these young men and appreciate all they've done on the field and everything. And Isabella, can you stand up? She was my videographer. We videoed the games once we kind of figured out you have to push the red button to get everything. But she helped me out tremendously this year. She's a soccer player at the high school, and I appreciate your help this year so these boys can watch yourself, and they could get chewed out twice, once on the field and in the room there, and we watched the game. But I appreciate it. Thank y'all. Thank you, board.
All right, on three. One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations to all those outstanding athletes. And now, I'd like to recognize Jill Barker.
Good evening. Vice Chair Milner, members of the board, Dr. Nolte and Dr. Garrett. It is my true honor to recognize two of our very best high-performing schools in Haywood County, and I can say that because I was the principal at one of them. So I have to be able to say that, but I just want you to know I'm very proud of both of you. Both of these schools are Title I schools, which means their poverty rate is above 50%. And because of that, the state of North Carolina will recognize each year the top 10% of schools with that poverty rate who are the highest achieving, and they call those schools reward schools. And there were 89 this year, and Bethel Elementary and Riverbend Elementary were two of those. So let's give them a round of applause real quick. And so, that's a huge deal, because you're talking, you know, and what I told Ms. Chambers when I met with her staff, it's different than the Blue Ribbon Award in that when you say that you can achieve with children that are living in poverty, to me, that is saying there's no excuses. A child is a child. It does not matter the socioeconomic background of that kid. And that was why I was always so proud at Bethel, that we did it and we didn't make excuses. And so, I'm very proud of both of these schools for that. Also, Riverbend Elementary, after you get these top 10% of schools, then they pick the highest top 10%, and that left about eight schools that get to compete for the overall distinguished school award, as you know, that Jonathan Valley and Bethel have won for the past two years. And Riverbend is up for that. This year, they just found out they're in the final two. They are going to get a visit from the judges. So it's just a really huge honor for our county. And, you know, Riverbend wasn't in the running earlier because they didn't have a poverty over 50%, but their population, you know, that has changed somewhat, and they now are over that, and so they're going to be able to compete. We're just so proud of y'all. You're in the final 2%. So at this time, I want to recognize each school individually. I want you to come up, and we'll start with Bethel Elementary for, let me read your, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to bring those. See, I'm new with this. Okay. And what your certificate says is, "The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends congratulations for being named a Title I reward school for sustained academic performance through 2013-2014." So come on up, Bethel, and accept your award. Where are you going to take their picture, Todd? Oh, okay. Okay, love y'all. I'll hug the rest of you. Okay. And congratulations to Bethel, very proud of all the work, and to Riverbend, I know the work that has gone into this. This is just another accolade. So I'm with y'all. What is it? November 18th is when their visit will be conducted, and so there will be people, mostly it's administrators from other parts of the state, but they will not be from the Western North Carolina. They want to know what we're doing up here, okay? They already want to know. So, Riverbend Elementary, again, I'm going to give you two certificates, and your first one says, "The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends congratulations for being named a Title I reward school for sustained academic performance through 2013-2014." And then, "The Haywood County Schools Board of Education acknowledges and extends congratulations for being named in the top 10% of Title I reward schools in North Carolina." So come on up. Everybody in the picture, Ms. Chambers said. Oh, I love the kids. Congratulations. Congratulations, Riverbend.
Congratulations to these schools. You have made us proud. Thank you for the hard work. And now, I would like to introduce Dr. Carol Douglas.
Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, it's my pleasure tonight to recognize two teachers from our schools. The first one I'd like to recognize is Ms. Rhonda Haney. If you'll come on up, Rhonda. Rhonda is a social studies teacher at Waynesville Middle School. She has 19 years experience, no, 20 years experience. Sorry about that. I forgot to count this. She has a master's degree in social studies and is National Board certified. She has participated in many things at the school, including teaching, and let me make sure I get this right, We the People Advanced Government Class in helping and participating in CUPO, and tonight, we would like to recognize her. And I'll let Mr. Putnam read that, but we are recognizing Rhonda as the North Carolina Bar Association Foundation Outstanding Middle School Teacher. And she received a plaque from the Bar Association, and it says, "Outstanding Middle School Teacher Recognition Award Presented to Rhonda Haney for Your Dedication to Civic Education, Law Related Education." And then, we have a certificate for you. I'm sorry. Certificate, and it also says, I'll let Dr. Garrett hand this to you. This is, "Haywood County Board of Education's Certificate of Recognition Presented to Rhonda Haney for Your Dedication to Civic Education, North Carolina Bar Association Foundation Outstanding Middle School Teacher Recognition Award." Thank you. Congratulations. Good job, Vice Chair. Our next teacher I'd like to recognize, Deb Jones. If you'll come on up, Deb. Deb is a math teacher at Waynesville. She started at Waynesville Middle School. Now, she's at Haywood Early College, and she has been teaching math for 30 years. That's hard to believe. She is a great math teacher, I can tell you, and she has participated in more trainings than I can name, some of which include Texas Instrument Training, Duke University Training, Meredith College Training. She is always willing to seek more and go anywhere that we need her to or present to our teachers. She's done an outstanding job, and this year, she's being recognized as the North Carolina Outstanding Mathematics Teacher for Haywood County, and she was recently recognized at the state conference in Greensboro. Congratulations. Certificate of recognition presented to Deb Jones, North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, Outstanding Secondary School Mathematics Teacher for 2014. Congratulations. Thank you, Deb and Rhonda. We're very proud of both of you.
Now, I'd like to recognize Jenny Wood, who will present the Teacher of the Year.
Vice Chair Milner, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it is my pleasure to recognize tonight Mr. Randy Presley as the 2014 Haywood County Schools Teacher of the Year. Mr. Presley earned both his bachelor's and master's degree from Western Carolina University. He began teaching math at Tuscola in 1986 and still teaches math there today. In both 2011 and 2014, he was voted by the senior class as their most influential teacher and Tuscola High School's Teacher of the Year. Mr. Presley has served as the math department chair, the math club sponsor, a PLC leader, math competition coordinator, on the 4x4 Planning Committee, Spirit Committee, Scholarship Committee, and that's just to name a few. As I quote from Mr. Presley's portfolio, you can understand why he is the Teacher of the Year. "As far as my greatest contributions to education, I don't know that I've ever really done anything that would be called great by the average person on the street. It's so hard for me to talk myself up, but if I don't brag on what is happening with my students, then I'm doing them a great disservice. In my heart and in my soul and in my very being, I know that something special is happening with my children, and I am contributing to their education. We have fun, we learn math, and we get ready for the real world. I contribute by leading by example with hard work and an unwavering dedication to success day in and day out. I contribute by sharing stories of my many failures and how I've learned from those failures and turned them into successes. I contribute by having faith in all that my children do, whether it is in math, or in soccer, or in science, or in welding. I contribute to the success of my children, not so much by the content that I teach, but by sharing with them the content of my heart." Mr. Presley is also one of the Region 8, one of two of the finalists in Region 8 for North Carolina Teacher of the Year. So we are so proud of Mr. Presley and everything that he has done for our schools and students, and I present to you the 2014 Haywood County Schools Teacher of the Year, Mr. Randy Presley.
Well, this is a little awkward to me. I'm used to talking to kids, so I'm just going to pretend you all are little kids, and maybe I'll be okay. I don't do well in crowds, but I'll give it my darndest. I'm trying to represent our county as we go forward. You know, I didn't ask for any of these things, but they came along, so it's my job to try my darndest to, you know, bring it home for Haywood County. And the crew will be evaluating me the 24th of this month. They'll be there all day long, visiting with me, different groups of students and parents and coworkers, and I've paid most of them off, so I think it's going to be okay. I've got this covered. And by the way, Mr. Collins is not here. If y'all could make sure, if you would, before I forget, I wore a bright red shirt to that Haywood County deal at the country club, and he ridiculed me. I had a cute little tie that had kids on it, and I thought, yeah, we're going for Teacher of the Year, wear the tie with kids on it, and it went with the red shirt. And I didn't think about his feelings towards Let's Big Pizga every time we can. So please tell him, bright yellow, big T, okay? There's the camera. Camera. Yes. But I asked Mr. Collins before I came up, what's the protocol, because, again, I'm so out of my element, I don't know how any of these things work, and I said, "Do I talk?" And he said, "I hope not." I'm still not sure how to interpret that. Let me say a few other quick things. I'm from Jackson County, and when I was looking for work, there was no work over there, and Haywood County was the closest place. Haywood County took me in like a stray dog in a way, when I didn't have anywhere else to go. Charles Starnes hired me. Charles Starnes had faith in me and gave me a chance, and, you know, I'm very, very grateful. Haywood County's my home now in so many ways. Tuscola is, I think of it as my school, even though I live 30 miles away, it's, I feel like I've...
Oh, I love the kids. Congratulations! Congratulations, River Band.
Congratulations to these schools. You have made us proud. Thank you for the hard work. And now, I would like to introduce Dr. Carol Douglas.
Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize two teachers from our schools. The first one I'd like to recognize is Ms. Rhonda Haney. If you'll come on up, Rhonda? Rhonda is a social studies teacher at Waynesville Middle School. She has nineteen years' experience, no, twenty years' experience. Sorry about that. I forgot to count this. She has a master's degree in social studies and is National Board Certified. She has participated in many things at the school, including teaching. Let me make sure I get this right. We the People Advanced Government Class in helping and participating in CUPo. And tonight, we would like to recognize her. And I'll let Mr. Putnam read that. But we are recognizing Rhonda as the North Carolina Bar Association Foundation Outstanding Middle School Teacher. And she received a plaque from the Bar Association, and it says, "Outstanding Middle School Teacher Recognition Award Presented to Rhonda Haney for Your Dedication to Civic Education." Law-related education.
Thank you.
And then we have a certificate for you. I'm sorry.
Gotcha, I gotcha.
Certificate, and it also says, I'll let Dr. Garrett hand this to you. This is Haywood County Board of Education's Certificate of Recognition Presented to Rhonda Haney for Your Dedication to Civic Education, North Carolina Bar Association Foundation Outstanding Middle School Teacher Recognition Award. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good job, Vice Chair. Our next teacher I'd like to recognize, Deb Jones. If you'll come on up, Deb. Deb is a math teacher at Waynesville. She started at Waynesville Middle School. Now, she's at Haywood Early College. And she has been teaching math for thirty years. That's hard to believe.
My God.
She is a great math teacher, I can tell you. And she has participated in more trainings than I can name, some of which include Texas Instrument Training, Duke University Training, Meredith College Training. She is always willing to seek more and go anywhere that we need her to or present to our teachers. She's done an outstanding job. And this year, she's being recognized as the North Carolina Outstanding Mathematics Teacher for Haywood County. And she was recently recognized at the state conference in Greensboro. Congratulations. Certificate of Recognition Presented to Deb Jones, North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, Outstanding Secondary School Mathematics Teacher for 2014. Thank you, Deb and Rhonda. We're very proud of both of you.
Now, I'd like to recognize Jenny Wood, who will present the Teacher of the Year.
Vice Chair Milner, Members of the Board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte. It is my pleasure to recognize tonight Mr. Randy Presley as the 2014 Haywood County Schools' Teacher of the Year. Mr. Presley earned both his bachelor's and master's degree from Western Carolina University. He began teaching math at Tuscola in 1986 and still teaches math there today. In both 2011 and 2014, he was voted by the senior class as their most influential teacher and Tuscola High School's Teacher of the Year. Mr. Presley has served as the math department chair, the math club sponsor, a PLC leader, math competition coordinator, on the four-by-four planning committee, spirit committee, scholarship committee, and that's just to name a few. As I quote from Mr. Presley's portfolio, you can understand why he is the Teacher of the Year. "As far as my greatest contributions to education, I don't know that I've ever really done anything that would be called great by the average person on the street. It's so hard for me to talk myself up, but if I don't brag on what is happening with my students, then I'm doing them a great disservice. In my heart and in my soul and in my very being, I know that something special is happening with my children, and I am contributing to their education. We have fun, we learn math, and we get ready for the real world. I contribute by leading by example with hard work and an unwavering dedication to success day in and day out. I contribute by sharing stories of my many failures and how I've learned from those failures and turned them into successes. I contribute by having faith in all that my children do, whether it is in math, or in soccer, or in science, or in welding. I contribute to the success of my children not so much by the content that I teach, but by sharing with them the content of my heart." Mr. Presley is also one of the Region Eight, one of two of the finalists in Region Eight for North Carolina Teacher of the Year. So, we are so proud of Mr. Presley and everything that he has done for our schools and students. And I present to you the 2014 Haywood County Schools' Teacher of the Year, Mr. Randy Presley.
Well, this is a little awkward to me. I'm used to talking to kids, so I'm just going to pretend you all are little kids. Maybe I'll be okay. I don't do well in crowds, but I'll give it my darndest. I'm trying to represent our county as we go forward. You know, I didn't ask for any of these things, but they came along, so it's my job to try my darndest to, you know, bring it home for Haywood County. And the crew will be evaluating me the 24th of this month. They'll be there all day long, visiting with me, different groups of students and parents and coworkers. And I've paid most of them off, so I think it's gonna be okay. I've got this covered. And by the way, Mr. Collins is not here. If you all could make sure, if you would, before I forget, I wore a bright red shirt to that Haywood County deal at the country club, and he ridiculed me. I had a cute little tie that had kids on it. And I thought, yeah, we're going for Teacher of the Year, wear the tie with kids on it. And it went with the red shirt. And I didn't think about his feelings towards letting Big Pisga every time we can. So, please tell him, bright yellow, big T, okay? There's the camera, camera. Yes. But I asked Mr. Collins before I came up, what's the protocol? Because again, I'm so out of my element, I don't know how any of these things work. And I said, "Do I talk?" And he said, "I hope not." I'm still not sure how to interpret that. Let me say a few other quick things. I'm from Jackson County, and when I was looking for work, there was no work over there. And Haywood County was the closest place. Haywood County took me in like a stray dog in a way, when I didn't have anywhere else to go. Charles Starnes hired me. Charles Starnes had faith in me and gave me a chance, and you know, I'm very, very grateful. Haywood County's my home now, in so many ways. Tuscola is, I think of it as my school, even though I live thirty miles away. It's, I feel like I've got a little vested entrance, vested entrance, I'll get it said, you know what I mean, in the school system. And I'd like to work a little bit longer and just see how things play out. Thank you all very much for your kind words. And I'm not sure I deserve this, because if you go to Tuscola, it'd be a fly on the wall, you'd see a ton of teachers, they work as hard, and some of them harder than I do. A lot of times I get there, some of the new teachers are there when I go through the door, and I'm an early bird. Some of them, I stayed over today, and I was there at six o'clock, and there were two math teachers leaving. And that humbles me to think, how did I get this award when, you know, maybe there's a lot more people that deserve it? Because they certainly, you know, they work very, very hard for our system and, more importantly, for our children. So, I'm proud to be a part of Haywood County, and I'll do my best and bring home that regional award.
Mr. Nolte, Vice Chair, I'd like to say something to Mr. Presley. He was the man that had my wife, and the man who had my oldest daughter. The most heartfelt thing that you want to stick around, I hope you have my youngest daughter.
There you go.
Because, as I've always said, I've always told my daughters, they'll look back in their life, and there'll always be one or two people on your hand that would make a difference in your life. And I promise you, there'll be a teacher, or two, in that hand, always. So, I can say to my oldest daughter, you're on that hand. So, you deserve what you deserve. You really, you truly, truly deserve it. And your humbleness is remarkable. You're a fine teacher, you've left a mark on a lot of kids in these thirty years, and I'm glad we took the dog in thirty seven years. Because we really got the Winchester Award for the best one, okay? So, thank you again for what you've done with the kids at Tuscola and the kids for Haywood County, sir, okay? I know you go in early in them mornings and meet those kids, and many times my daughter, you know, there we gotta go, Mr. Presley's gonna help me in the morning. So, again, I appreciate the efforts you guys put in to make us such a successful math program at Tuscola High School.
Congratulations, Mr. Presley. You are most deserving.
Yes, yes, sure, yes.
Dr. Ann Garrett for the Principal of the Year.
Vice Chair Milner, Members of the Board, it is my pleasure to recognize the 2014-15 Principal of the Year, Mr. Jeff Haney. Mr. Haney is a Mars Hill and Western Carolina University graduate. He's been a vocational teacher and coached at Inca High School, Assistant Principal at Pisga, Principal at Clyde Elementary, and this is his fifth year at Central Haywood High School. He was also selected by his peers to serve as Principal of the Year in 2012. So, you can see, he's greatly respected by his peers and his coworkers. Mrs. Parrish, lead teacher at Central Haywood High School, said, "He's a true leader and, above all, an enthusiastic team member. He's highly respected and popular with staff and students alike. He inspires the staff to take the lead, but he's there to guide, keep us in line, cheer us on. He works in many ways to make sure that we reach the ultimate goal. True compassion for doing what is best for all students." Carolyn Bethay Brown, social studies teacher, said, "He's fabulous. Kind and compassionate leader, he's got a wonderful sense of humor, he's a joy to work with. He also holds high expectations for students and staff alike." This is what his students had to say about him. Tristan said, "He's been very kind to me, and he let me back in school." William said, "He's cool, he keeps his calm well." Bethany said, "He's organized, he likes a drug-free and safe environment, he wants all of us to graduate, get our diploma, and find success in life. He respects us, he asks how we're doing, and he's truly interested in each of us. He has a passion for his students, staff, and also parents. The passion is evidenced by the decisions made in the attempts to have each school be successful at Central Haywood High School. Mr. Haney's calm demeanor has added to the school atmosphere. I commend him on his dedication to educating our students at Central Haywood High School. I present to you Mr. Jeff Haney, Haywood County's Principal of the Year."
Well, I've got a couple of things I need to address first. Mr. Shepherd, you're in charge of school safety. There was three Hanes in this room at one time. There's a problem there. You need to check the room before you let the board members in. It's funny, I was thinking yesterday, I thought, I wonder what's in North Carolina news as far as education? Here's the main topics. The growing crisis, too few teachers for North Carolina. Where's the voucher money going? NC Common Core review. Teacher pay, budget cuts, tenure pay cuts put North Carolina teachers on the edge. Loss of longevity pay for NC teachers. Here's the good things. There's always good, too. Reading proficiency in the third grade is on the rise. Over eighty percent of our third graders are on grade level. North Carolina graduation rate is the highest in state history. And I was thinking, what does that remind me of? Rocky. He gets knocked down, but he keeps getting up. He gets knocked down, he keeps getting up, he never quits. So, I thought, well, I've been in Haywood County ten years, what's my career been like? I'm Principal of the Year, what's it like? I began at Pisga School with Danny Miller. He was the Fuhrer. You did not question anything he said. He was in charge, no question. The first thing I can remember him asking me to do was, "Do you know anyone we could hire as an assistant principal?" Heather Hollinsworth is who I recommended. That's turned out pretty good for Haywood County. That was a good move. Might be the only time he's ever listened to me. I worked with the Dream Team. If you don't believe me, you can ask Heather or Travis, they have their pictures on the wall. Travis Collins, myself, and Heather, we called ourselves the Dream Team. You know, we survived a devastating flood. We watched a basketball team from the mountains become state champions, which, when we walked down to Chapel Hill, we thought, this is over. Those guys can jump out of the gym, but we beat them. State championship. And I know you'll find this hard to believe, but Travis and I stopped a FEMA team from cleaning up the riverbanks because we thought there were kids from Pisga, and we stopped them. You'll have to ask Travis about that. He did the signs, and we had to get down. But we stopped, when they turned and had the full beers, we knew we were in trouble. But it was fun. My first principalship was at Clyde Elementary. The first things I had to do that year was eliminate jobs, because we had a budget cut. Jimmy Rogers' phone was probably red hot, and it was nothing to do with me or the county, it was the budget cuts. We decided we'd focus on reading. When I entered at Clyde, what a great school. Tyree Kaiser was phenomenal. But our reading scores had dropped down into the fifty percentile. When I left, it was in the eighties. So, I'm not bragging on me, it's what the staff has done. We had a fifth-grade girl who lost her life to cancer. So, kind of like the Rocky movie, again, even in my career. Hired a great assistant principal, Anna Williams, and we all know what happened there. She went on to be a principal and then passed away at an early age, way, way too young. Then Dr. Garrett sends me to the alternative school, the school of bad kids. I've had people in the community call it the prison. That makes me mad. And so, what my goal was, is to change the way people look at the school. You know, in five years, we went from a school that had no technology to where we're one-to-one, thanks to Mr. Trantham. We have a computer for every child in the building. We're the only school in Haywood County that has that. Lots of help there. Graduation rate, we were in the forties, we're in the eighties. We're, you know, eighty-three point one percent, I believe, is where we're at. Can we get better? Yeah, you better believe it, and we will. ACT benchmark, Dr. Nolte's real proud of this, you know, how do we measure college readiness? Forty-two point nine percent of our students are college-ready by ACT. That's incredible, because a year ago, we were fifth from the bottom, and we moved a hundred and forty-three places. And our work keys, our vocational commitment, is way up there. And this year, we made growth. And I look back today, because I wanted to check, I don't know that we've ever made growth before. I don't think we have. We made growth as an alternative school. That's a big deal. But it's not me, it's the staff that works together. And as Dr. Garrett read, it's a staff that believes in what we're doing, not what I'm doing, not what I'm pushing, not a program, but what we're doing together. And we're dedicated to the success of every student. And I stole some stuff from Dr. Nolte, you know, did you know there's a hundred and fifteen school districts in our state? And we're fifteenth in school performance composite. That's pretty good. Seventeenth in ACT benchmark. Haywood County middle schools are in the top twenty-five percent in academic performance. And as they announced earlier, we have one of the number-one performing elementary schools in the state. Three others are in the top five percent, and all of our elementary schools are in the top twenty percent in academic performance. We've had two schools named national Title I schools. We're pretty good at what we do. For me to be recognized by the principals and assistant principals, the leaders of our school, that's very humbling. Mr. Presley, it is very humbling, very, very much so. You know, I've worked in great schools with great staff. The central office staff is so supportive. I'll ask them the dumbest questions you've ever heard, and they're so nice to answer them. Maintenance, transportation, the staff at ITC. And you have to think about, Haywood County Sheriff's Department supplies us SROs. Our SROs not only are police officers in our school, but they also make a difference in kids' lives. And that's very important to our success. You know, I've just been supportive to people that are dedicated, no matter what. Our school board, you all have been very supportive of me and what we do. And you know, I've worked for last year's Superintendent of the Year in Region Eight, recently, NCAE Superintendent, state superintendent. But Dr. Nolte has made the biggest influence on me and sold me on an idea, and it's the simplest idea you've ever heard. And it, three questions. Is it productive? Does it promote student success? Let me go back. Are you passionate about it? Sorry, I get nervous. I'm like you, Randy, I get a little nervous. Are you passionate about it? You better believe it. Does it promote student success? Yes. And is it productive? And Dr. Nolte introduced that to us a few years back. And you know what? If you'll use that as your litmus test, you can't go wrong in education right now. You just can't. If you don't have passion for it, don't get into it and don't do it. If it is not productive, then you can't be supportive. And if it's not helping students, then you've got a problem. So, Dr. Nolte, thank you for that. You know, the big thing is, my peers nominated me Principal of the Year, and I'm really not sure why. Because if you've heard what I've said, I work with some of the best in the country. Every one of them could be Principal of the Year in any county in this state, and probably in any state in this nation. But what a great honor it is, and thank you very much for recognizing me.
Thank you, Mr. Haney, and you are most deserving. And Mr. Haney and I share an interest. At this point, we really hate to admit it, but we're both Chicago Bear fans. That's right. Now, I would like to recognize Todd Barbie for Spotlight on Kent Middle.
Just before I get started, I would like to, as somebody that's not new into school administration, but somebody that's still learning, has a lot to learn, Mr. Haney is an awesome guy. And I just appreciate what you've done for me. Pick up the phone, he always answers, and he doesn't say, "Gosh, you dummy." He always is a great resource, so. But Vice Chair Milner, Board Members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, we'd like to thank you so much for the honor and privilege of representing Kent Middle School tonight. It is a wonderful place to learn, grow, and let kids test the water of a little bit of freedom. We're lucky to work with dedicated teachers, wonderful parents, and, most importantly, excellent kids. We're pleased to announce that Kent Middle School made growth last year, was in the top twenty-one percent of all middle schools in North Carolina. But we're just not satisfied with making growth in the top twenty-one percent. We've got our sights next year set on exceeding growth in the top fifteen percent. With our teachers and students, this goal is well within our reach. And we're going to continue to strive for excellence, even in the face that public education doesn't work. And we're here to prove that public education does work, and especially here in Haywood County, so.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie, for that excellent presentation. And I'm going to come and play Twister with those guys. And then you do have the rescue squad there. Okay, okay, good. All right. Now's a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. Ms. Moody, do we have anybody who signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will look at the minutes. We have reviewed both minutes for the closed and regular sessions of the October thirteenth meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve these?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shinnville. All in favor, please raise your hand. That was approved unanimously. Now, I recognize Mr. Mark Shepherd for the school crisis response plans, which I need when I play Twister.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair, and Members of the Board. First of all, we need to have you guys to approve the crisis response plans, but they do not leave the central office, so they're there for your approval. When you want to come review those, they're in my office. And you know, anytime you want to call or come and see those, they're available for you. And like Dr. Garrett has said, that's not a state law that does be approved anymore, but we want your eyes on those. We invite that to be a very transparent process, and for anything we can do to improve those, we want to do it.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the crisis?
So moved.
Second by, was it Mr. Leatherwood? All in favor, please raise your hands. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Policies to lead the school's resolution.
Okay, this resolution is something that was brought before you before to look at, and it is just something that you guys can draft to say that, yes, we are in fact beginning tonight, if we adopt these policies, in earnest, having the State School Board Association revise our school board policies. And it will be a complete and thorough revision from, you know, start to finish. And like the resolution says, we expect it to take between one and two years. The target probably being about fourteen to sixteen months. And you know, tonight, we'll be looking at the 1,000 series to actually be approved.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Henson made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. All in favor, raise your hand. Approved unanimously. Thank you.
And these are also, I mean, we're allowed to change the policies to our lack, liking, if we don't like exactly the word. That's the reason we're getting ready to look at everything.
Right.
Okay. Okay, policies.
Okay, so the first thing we'll do is bring before you the 2,000 series, which would be just for first reading. And there are forty-two of these. Most of them are very short, not to say that they're not important. They cover board operations, board members, board officers and committees, board meetings, board policies, and working with board attorneys and consultants. So, they're grouped in that way, and you'll find that, you'll find them grouped that way, and you'll also find them grouped that way in your correlation chart, which will help explain any changes from what we're doing. Okay, and we also need to remember the, to add the one that was the Agenda Adjustment, thirty-four-ten. And that is on testing. And the reason we needed to get that one in now, instead of waiting until the 3,000 series, is because that one is the one that expresses that our final exams, either CTE final exams, teacher-made final exams, will count twenty percent of a student's grade instead of twenty-five percent. And that's the new state Board of Education guidance on that. So, we wanted to get that one in place for first reading now, where we could pass it in December, and when people are doing grades and getting power school to report their grades out in January, we'll be in compliance with that.
Makes sense. Okay. And these will be tabled for thirty days for public input. Okay? Second reading.
Even going through the notes takes a minute. Okay. For second reading and a motion to approve is the 1,000 series. And does anybody have any questions about anything on the 1,000 series?
No, I make a motion that we approve the 1,000 series for the second reading.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Kirk Patrick made the motion. Second by Mr. Rogers. All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous.
I guess I should have said, I'd like to go ahead and make a I guess I should have said, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, we need to approve that's 1,000 series, but we have 3420, 5024, 6230.
Do we need to approve those separately? We'll approve those separately. Okay? That was the, for the 1,000?
Yeah.
1,000 series, Ms. Moody. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve 3420?
So moved.
Yeah, group them together.
All right, 3420, 5024, and 6230.
So moved.
Ms. Shenefield?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
That's all of them? Yes. Correct?
That's it? For now?
No, I mean for approval tonight.
For right now.
There's one more that made it on your page, but not on the agenda, and that is SA1, and we did bring it up for first reading last time. It's SA1, Student Conduct and Discipline, and it removes our language explaining corporal punishment. It was a contradiction with one of our new policies on parent involvement. Part of that parent involvement policy, you know, actually would have said, we need to inform parents if they're, you know, going to have corporal punishment used on their child. So it was kind of that time where we had to face, are we going to do it, or are we not? Our website had a statement that said we do not use it. Our SA1 still had a portion explaining how to do it properly, and the new policy was going to not have it in it. So it was time to either take it all out or all in. And the language in SA1 removes the use of corporal punishment and replaces it with a statement saying that we no longer use that.
Vice Chair, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve that SA1 as well.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion.
Still wish we could use a panel, but anyway.
Not in this day and age. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Actually, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you. And as you all go through these policies, if you have any questions, please feel free to call. You know, I'm doing my best to keep up on all of them, and, you know, we'll discuss them as best we can.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Thank you for keeping it short and sweet.
Regular monthly financial reports, Mr. Henson.
The Finance Committee met earlier, and all of them ragged their monthly financial reports were in order, and I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Henson made the motion. Second, Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, passes unanimously.
We also have a motion to approve 2014-15 Budget Resolution, Local Restrictive Current Expendence.
Did you put that in the form of a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hands. Unanimously.
We also have one more, a motion to liquidate, or liquidation of stock as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimously.
And that's all we have from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. All right, personnel, Dr. Garrett.
Vice Chair Milner, members of the board, for your information, you have 11 separation from employments, you have two employment status changes, and you have two leave of absences. For your approval, you have three employments, nine employee status changes, one leave of absence, four contracted services, 13 substitutes, one volunteer service, four employee coaches, four non-employee coaches, and eight volunteer coaches for approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Kirkpatrick made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leatherwood. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hands. And passes unanimously. Thank you. And that is all the business to come before the board. I declare this meeting adjourned.